All right, I think we're all here and ready to go. So it's 6:30 PM, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence. We have the roll call, please.
Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Mrs. Donahue. Mr. Elling. Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Knopf.
Here.
Mr. Coke.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Scholz.
Here.
And Mrs. Smith, here. Seven members present.
Thank you. First item up tonight is a presentation in regard to the CTC comprehensive plan.
So Mr. Lynch, the Director of our Career and Technical Center will be giving a summary, and you also have an attachment in the agenda of our full comprehensive plan for the Career and Technical Center. We have submitted, we have a comprehensive plan that we had shared with you for the K-12 schools. PDE also requires us to have one for our Career and Technical Center because it's listed as its own school. And following the review this evening, any questions? If you could just hold your questions to the end because the presentation is quite short. For the summary, we'll field any questions at the end. And then also just wanted to say that this plan will be available for public review, not only on the website, but also if anybody has any questions or wants to come in and see the plan, they can do so. And we'll also be direct any questions to either myself or Mr. Lynch. And then Colton, are you able to share the present, the summary presentation? It would be the second one listed there with the smaller. Nope, it's actually the first one listed. Sorry. Well, Colton's pulling that up. I just want to say these are three-year plans as required by PDE. So this one would take place in the fall and then go through the 2026 for review and revisions. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to review quickly the comprehensive plan in a couple of slides with you. The main points. The first slide, if you look, the outcome category for, for the CTC is post-secondary transition to school, military, or work. And our first goal would be to increase the completion rate. So we would track kids more on program of study, all our tasks, and their industry search so that we could get more students out to these areas, especially to work, and that we see students going into all these areas. This data is basically comes from a survey that PDE puts out a year after the students are out of school. And when we do three follow-ups on that survey. The, the rate of return to PD isn't real good. Ours is about 63%. And we'd like to see that increase across the state. The average is about 40 some percent return. So ours is above average, but it's still not where it should be. So this goal really goes toward that where the students are a year out of school and where our completers ended up. Next goal would be the outcome category rigorous courses of study. We've developed a set from ninth grade to 12th grade that basically allows students to look at where they want to end up when they finish a CTC program. Do they want to be in the world of work? Do they want to be in a two-year college, a four-year college, and where they want to be? And then I have my, my teachers sit down with them and tell, and actually track out what courses they should take. So if you want to be in RN, you should be taking in-depth courses like your PC and chemistries and courses like that. So we try to track that. This is at basically integrated more academic, higher structure academic courses within the CTC program of study and getting kids from the beginning to the end in the right path where they want to end up. Next talks about industry-based learning. And they talk about concentrators. A concentrator is a student that enters the CTC for two years. So after two years, they have to take an end-of-program assessment like a NOCTI or NIMS. And this is to increase that way rate in our industry-based learning objective to speed students up that at least when they're there, if they hit their third year, we can get them out sooner than their, if they would be a senior year, we can get them out sooner into work-based learning. The way we're set up now, they usually hit that goal of work-based learning their senior year. This year, we had two juniors that hit it halfway through the year. It's a 75% of the task list. And then I look at NOCTI scores and try to see where they're at on their pre-test to determine their outcome in their senior year. So we study that data and we look at that. Our scores down in the 10th grade right now, 10s going to 11s, and NOCTI scores are 70 some percent. Basically, they're already considered a con, full concentrator or considered a completer based on score. So I could see the 11th grade, they go into 11th grade next year, trying to transition more students that have their academics taken care of, add into the world of work. And that's what this, this is built around. It's totally based around getting kids out. Strengths of the CTC, course dual enrollment articulated credits, our curaling partnerships, Penn College dual enrollment program, and the Perkins Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment has given direction to our weaknesses and strengths within each program. Every two years, I'm challenged with a federal comprehensive needs assessment through Perkins, and we do that as a regional group, and they do it as a single school. And then we look at our weaknesses and our strengths, and we build our Perkins Plan around that for two years. Challenges, increase the concentrator rate, the completion rate, and educate IEP case managers to aid in career decisions and offerings at the Career Center, and build leadership capacity, empower staff in the development, and successful implementation of initiatives that better serve students, staff, and school. This year, one initiative we're going to look at is increasing math scores, the Keystone Algebra's within the sector of the CTC. And I'm working with Megan on bringing your district DPLs together with the CTE teachers to write lesson plans together. So CTE students actually understand algebra is important when you're sitting in the algebra class because you're doing it every day in the CTC class. They just don't see the connection. So we need to draw a connection. So that's what that's built around. And that's, that's basically a summarization of what the plan says.
I think it's important to under, I know that our board knows this, but many people still believe that vocational education is for students who are not headed towards post-secondary goals, and that is just absolutely not the case and definitely not the case at Keystone Central. Over half of the students in our high schools across, you know, all, half of our high school population takes one or more Career and Technical Center courses. And when you look at our graduating classes, 75% of our students are going on to either some type of post-secondary education. Half of them to four-year schools, and 25% of our students go on to two-year programs. So the career pathways that we've been doing for quite some time are really working. And, and you can always get better. There's a difference of one degree between hot water and, or boiling water and steam, and there's always room for improvement. Kurt, at this time, I'd like to also say the work that you've done since you've been the Director of the Career and Technical Center here has produced absolutely amazing results with student-level achievement, with the, the number of industry-based credentials that students attain before they leave high school, getting kids to understand the different career pathways from their areas of interest. And our performance rate on the NIMS and NOCTI, I know the NOCTI alone has improved over 20 percentage points from the first year you were here. So kudos to you. I think this plan is, is spot-on with the strengths and areas of improvement. And that doesn't really mean it's a weakness, even though you labeled it there. I, I think that there's more strengths than, than anything. But again, always trying to get a little bit better is what we should be striving to do.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from board members about the CTC comp plan?
Thank you. Dr. Martin expressed it beautifully. I think we all feel that way. For your challenges, if there's anything else you want to let us know that for challenges, whether it's, you know, equipment, funding, staff, space, I mean, please, I want you to always feel free, and I hope you do, to, to let us know because we all, and I, I am speaking for everyone here, I know I'm not supposed to, but I am, sorry, fully support the CTC program. And you've done, every year, you're just, I am just excited every time you come to do a presentation. It's some of the best news we ever hear here, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We appreciate the generosity and support of the board. I, I agree that they're supportive. We, as a team, we will let you know what resources we need, and thank you again for your continued support.
Next up is the hearing of visitors. Do we have any visitors signed up?
No, there are no visitors signed up this week.
Okay, thank you. Next up then is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We've concluded the 2223 school year with two successful graduation ceremonies. Our graduates have again made us very proud as 75% of the 257 graduates are continuing their education, and the remaining students are entering the military or workforce. Our summer programs for extended school year in Keystone Camp will be underway beginning on Monday. We have over 325 students attending the Keystone Camp program. And this is be the third or fourth year, third year for the program. I wanted to take a minute to, it's as the year came to a close, to say what an amazing team of administrators we have. This team, it doesn't matter if we're pushing ourselves to, to get better, if we're dealing with a crisis, they all pitch in, they're supportive, they respect one another, and they are absolutely the best administrative team that I've ever worked with across my 33 years. So I just want to publicly acknowledge you and your service. It's, sometimes they're very thankless jobs, but they're 24/7, 365 days a year, and you guys definitely put forth the effort and make me really proud. So thanks, thanks to our admin team. And then lastly, our admin team and our school leaders are actively preparing for next year, and we are ready to welcome the class of 2036 in August.
Any questions? All right. Next up are the usual monthly reports, the treasurer report, financial reports, and the students' enrollment report. Any specific questions about any of them? No? Okay. Moving along, then, we have the committee reports. The three listed here, I believe, are the only three who had meetings during the past month. The first is the Curricular/Cocurricular Committee. Rick?
The Curricular Committee met, and the primary issue was reviewing the new special ed curriculum. And we had a very nice thorough presentation about the new materials, program, standardization across all buildings. And there will be a significant financial investment, but per the discussion with the planners and the company and our curriculum coordinator, there are many pieces that we've been paying for in the past. And when you bring all those together, it's, it's a very similar cost. But the main thing about it at this point is it does, one, it standardizes it across the district regardless of the building. And it has very specific outcomes. It's been tested. The company that runs it or coordinates it will train the teachers and provide a long-term follow-up, either virtually, they can even send a, you know, face-to-face trainer as well. And so we were comfortable with that, and we felt very comfortable after, I mean, we had a thorough discussion, but we felt comfortable putting it forward to the board for approval. We think this is a great program for inclusiveness, children with special needs and families, a lot of skill-based work and preparing them for graduation. So that was the main concept.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next up is the Facilities Committee. Jeff?
Okay, thank you. The Facilities Committee met, I believe it was May 25th, a couple of weeks ago, and we had a rather lengthy agenda. So I'll try to go through this as quickly as I can without belaboring things. But we did have first up a Liberty Curtain project update. We had Jeff Straub from Crabtree Architects with us to give us kind of a, an update on where we are with the, with the Liberty Curtain building project. At that point, he filled us in that he was going to be meeting with the teachers, which he has, has done since then, one last time before they left for the summer to get their last input for what they would like to see in the building. They, we also had asked him a couple of things in the prior meeting about geotechnical tests and how would that withstand the standing water issue? If there's any of that in the area that we're looking at for the building, that geotechnical test will be done very soon here, the middle of this month. And when he, we asked him what's going to be attempted to get accomplished over the summer. He listed a lot of different things. They're going to be looking at the interior design layouts, transition from the design to the developmental stage. Engineering teams will be fully engaged. It's going to be doing a lot of the nuts and bolts work to get ready for the next steps. And so it was a very good update. I think we're right on schedule according to what Jeff told us as far as where we should be at this point. So we, we're going to continue moving ahead with that, and hopefully we'll stay on that schedule as we move along. You're going to see later in the agenda that we're going to be asking for the board to approve. I believe there's five different things on there. First of all, the, the Bucktail Girls Locker Room Project, there is a contract there for, to make sure, working with the engineers and architect to make sure that our design for that, excuse me, complies with the code. Voting code and Title IX. And that work hopefully will begin this very soon, this, this month. The next project on there is the canopy replacement project for the, the middle school. I would like to re-demo the what's currently there, and we, there'll be on there, on the agenda. Part of that, we're asking for approval is to have Crabtree come up with a design for that and for also for the, the demo and removal of that. So once we get a design, then we can move ahead with what we're, we're going to do to replace that. It's not going to be anything near what's already there. It'll be something a lot more simplified. The next thing you'll see is the middle school fieldhouse insulation project. We would like to have this, probably won't be getting done with that until, get into that till fall because of the intense heat that would be involved. It'll take about three or four days to complete that, and you'll see that, that is on the agenda as well for approval. The door replacements for the different doors that we were going to replace, we were originally wanted, wanted to do, use the PCCD money for those. However, there were a few more doors that needed to be placed that we needed to take three of that, that will be replaced with using capital funds. And that is also part of, that was part of the 10-year plan, and it will be taken off once that's completed. We also discussed something that came, that started out in the Curricular/Cocurricular Committee, a topic about how we were going to, I guess, the ministerium that had sent us a, a letter requesting not to be having, I guess, any kind of activities starting in the mornings, I guess, before 1 o'clock. And we had a rather lengthy discuss, discussion about that, and we, we all kicked around some different, different ideas on that. And I think we, I guess, since not all the board members have had a chance to weigh in on that, we didn't come up with anything, any formal recommendation. I think Butch said, recommended that we would just state that we don't routinely schedule events on Sunday morning, but, and that no athlete, if they would be ever penalized because of that, if they had, if they are attending religious services or whatever, which would give us a little bit of flexibility. But again, not all board members have had a chance to have a, give their opinion on that topic. So we haven't really, I think, Dr. Martin kind of waited, wanted to wait until we talked to everybody about that. Some other informational things, we got a report, Alyssa Wingfield, Wingfield was, with us also at that meeting. She gave us some updates on where we were with the Bucktail Renova Project, the energy savings project that we did. They were guaranteeing us 77,000, $7,778 worth of savings. And actually, we saved almost $16,000 on that. So it was above and beyond what we had actually anticipated getting for the, through those savings. So it was a, and that gained for us of what, eight, eight, $9,000. We're also going to be getting an updated 10-year plan, facility plan. They're going to be revising that for us to take a look at at our next meeting, which is prob, will probably be in August. And there was the last thing there, the next, the last thing was a program that, it's a before and after-school program called the Champions Program. I guess Dr. Martin has looked at different programs, talked to different vendors in some of the conferences she's been at, and she was recommending this one that we would partner with them through the Community Education Program and allow the, this program to operate in the different elementary schools. And it's, it would tie in with our current curriculum. There were a lot of, a lot of good features to this program. It will be available to parents from 6:00 to 7:30 in the morning and from 2:30 to 6:00 in the afternoon. They have very reasonable rates. Our employees would get a 10% discount. Title I eligible families would, they charge on a sliding scale, and there would be no staffing costs. And I don't think that it, it was, it's going to interfere much with the current, current programs that are already operating in the YMCA. And there's one up in Blanchard through a church group. It really doesn't cost, other than some utility costs, it wouldn't, it's really not going to cost the district anything. They take care of handling their staff and so on.
Do you have an update to let you know that we did discuss a fee? Because what the committee had directed was that would be consistent among the programs. And so Joni and I have been working out that rate for consistency so that all three programs are being, you know, comparably using space and, and being, so there would be a fee associated that the district would recruit revenue for that.
Right, we had talked about that, the fact that the, the other after-school programs, you know, do pay a nominal fee. I think it's $50 a month. So we, Dr. Martin's right, we wanted to keep it consistent across the board. And the only other thing that we, was mentioned as far as information that we're going to be, you'll be seeing some different maintenance contracts that renew annually as we go through, as they come up for free renewal. So Rob will keep us updated on what, what they are, and they'll be appearing on the agenda. So as I said, it was a long agenda, and we, we discussed a lot of things. I'm excited about where we are with a lot of the things. We're making some great improvements, as you can see or hear, in, in our different buildings and especially with the Liberty Curtain Project. We're, we're right on target with that. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Elizabeth?
Thank you. Um, I'm on the Facilities Committee with Butch, and I just had a couple of comments. I didn't really think about this until afterwards, that to get the voice from the supervisor of facilities about staffing on Sundays, I mean, to me, that seems to be more of a focus, whether or not we can have staff on Sundays. So.
We, we, we do have that information. I have, I have that information.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying, we didn't discuss it during the meeting, so I just sort of came up later. So I just want you to know, Rob, you have a voice with me. So.
He has a voice.
Thank you. Yes, yes.
He has a voice. He's, he's been actively involved in the conversation, so I appreciate that.
Yes, he, he does. Yes, thank you so much. But I just want to, that's my focus right now is to make sure that we can cover the staff on Sundays. And the Champions Program, I do have some concerns about that. It's a for-profit company that's around the world, and I'm not sure if that would be a good fit for a public school district to house a corporation. So my concern is, I don't even know if we're, that would be a good fit. And at some point, I'd like to hear the solicitor's comments on that, whether or not a for-profit company should be using public space. Now, I want you to know, for the past four or five years, I've wanted a childcare service for the employees, and I still support that 1,000%. But I'm not comfortable until we learn more about having a corporation leasing space from a public school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Moving to the Policy Committee meeting.
I, the Policy Committee. You know, the policy, the next meeting of the Policy Committee will be in August. You'll see it up ahead in the agenda, 16 policies recommended on first read tonight, and next week at the voting meeting will be the second read, and will be the time, assuming that there are no objections, will be passed. So I would urge you to read the 16 policies on first read between now and the voting meeting next week, and then we'll pass them on the second read then. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Right? Any specific questions about any, any of them?
About the policies? You want to talk about policy now, or do you want to wait till we get to the policy?
Yeah, we can, we can wait. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Let's see. Next, several items are under Boards. The first one up is to choose our PSBA voting delegates, delegates for this, this year? Or is it delegate? Is it one? I think I was the only one who was chosen for last year.
I think we're authorized to, to go to the.
Well, it's to go, there's a voting delegate. I think last year, that was me. And then there's also delegates who go to the conference. I believe they're not. Okay.
Yeah, this is just a.
So it's a little bit different this year.
It's not the.
Okay. Thoughts about who those would be? Those would be.
Like seriously, I am Tracy. When is it?
We can come back to this next week.
November fourth at nine AM. That's a Saturday. I'll be working.
Oh, Saturday? I can do Saturdays. If no one else, if nobody else wants to do it. I will step up and volunteer.
Don't say you can do in person, in person attendance will take place in Mechanicsburg for the first one hundred and twenty who register. Since you fall as a second class district, you are entitled to appoint up to three individuals.
Oh, okay. Yeah. See, last year I did it over video and I think I was the only one. But yeah, okay. Up so up to three. So we could think about it between now and.
Sure, please. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is authorize the superintendent to fill vacancies. I think that's self-explanatory, something we do every year. Next one is. The next two items are related to the ASA conference that is in the Washington DC area. The assistant superintendent will be attending and I believe Rick will also be attending. Any questions about that? Okay. Next one. Is in regard to the school improvement plans. Is there anything specific we need to cover there?
So the school improvement plans are again a requirement of PDE. They are all aligned specifically to the comprehensive plan that you heard about from. Megan and I believe Justin helped with that plan and Christina, a couple of people presented that a couple of months ago. So these are specific to the buildings and all the same goals are aligned. They're requiring to be board approved, so that we can submit them to PDE.
Okay. And I, I don't recall what, is this something we do every year? Is there a reason we're doing these?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now, next, next is the King's note in regard to King's Bry special education council. I think that's just our contract, right? Special, special there. Okay, next one, David Lindsay, right? Nothing, the next are some settlements that were discussed previously. Okay. Unless there's any questions on any of those items, we can move to the next category. All right. Under meeting minutes, there are minutes for several meetings listed here. Any questions in regard to any of them? In the meeting or the committee chairs? Okay. There are quite a few items listed under business. There is one that I would like to pull to the top, item number three in regard to the final general fund budgets. I noticed that the documents that is attached to the board agenda, let's see, it's titled. Let's see here. It's the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final general fund budget dot PDF. In that file, I think, I think there's a protocol issue that we need to deal with at some point. In that file, I noticed that my signature page from March or May eleventh. That was attached to the May third. Document that I signed that the board approved is now attached to a document dated May thirty first. Which was not approved by the board and was not signed by me. So I, I believe that there's maybe a procedural thing that needs to occur. Is what I, what I see right now is my signature on a document that I did not sign and that the board did not approve. And I know, I know that there's difference than the one that I signed that was dated May third. Because it has an additional, I think, nine pages. And there's a couple of small changes to some of the line items, maybe like. Fifty thousand dollars moved from one to another and ten thousand dollars moved from another one to another. Right? So, so my, my question, and I think maybe this might be for the school lawyers, do we need to hold? A special voting meeting to vote on this new version of the documents?
That's what happens now. If I'm looking at this correctly, David, if the, on the, in the attachment. The first page is final general fund budget.
Right.
Okay. And there are no signatures there.
No.
That's what will be voted on next week.
Right.
Certificate of estimated ending fund balance is there.
And then the next page is my signature.
It is, but. Okay. So at the top of that page.
Right.
The title of the page that you signed was for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. And that's a PDE requirement that happens in May.
Right. And what is this?
So you signed the proposed budget, which was what was presented in May, and that's what the board approved by a vote. Of five to. Three. And so you signed that the proposed budget was inspected and passed. So that signature from the proposed budget is part of the final general fund budget.
So it has nothing to do with what it's actually attached to.
It says that, that the board, your signature there indicates and says right there what it indicates.
Right.
Because based on the school code, you're certifying that the board of directors took action.
Right.
And public inspection of the proposed budget.
The proposed budget, which was dated May third, that was the one I saw. And I assume that that was posted on our website.
Yes.
Right. But, but was my confusion is my signature appears to be attached to a.
Your signature is on the proposed budget piece. It's not. The, the next signature page, the top is the, the final. General fund budget. There's two steps to the process.
After next week's meeting when we get the final vote on the budget.
Okay.
We have to vote on a proposed budget that hasn't been advertised in for thirty days. After it's advertised, then we're going to vote on.
The final.
Next meeting. Next voting section, which is next Thursday, we'll vote on the budget. If the budget passes next Thursday, then you'll sign the approved budget, not the proposed budget. This is proposed.
So what, what version is out there right now on our website for the public to view?
Passed by the majority of the board last.
So the May, May third version is out there on a website now. Okay. So this May thirty first version is something that's for the future.
Yes, it could be the same.
It's not exactly the same. That's, that's my point. There's some difference. Nine pages have been added. And there are a few line items that are slightly different. And that's, that's, that's my question. So, so what we put out there is the proposed budget on May third. Is not exactly the same as this final version of the budget here. The reason my attention was drawn to that is because it looks to me when I look at this. Document that my signature was attached to something I didn't sign, but, but that's, that's regardless. That's, that's not the case. Okay. But it was not included in the May third budget, but it is included here, the extra nine pages. Right. And, and it's because of the extra nine pages. We're not there, but they're here. And then the extra like fifty K here and ten K there that was shifted around. That's. Right? Okay. And.
Some real estate numbers according to home set, modest set.
Right, okay. Okay. So, so what we're saying is we have nothing new, no new action in regard to this.
Your new action.
Thirty first version, even though there's a couple of changes versus what was published on May third.
But this has been.
New action.
And then the action next week would be to approve the final budget.
Okay. All right. So we don't have to go back and re-sign anything.
No, it's just, it's, it's just, it's the same number. It's just that she had to make a couple of transfers. And I mean, it's, it doesn't make, it doesn't change anything as far as the final total. It's, you know, it's not going to change. How much the whole budget is going to be. You do a tentative budget, the proposed budget, which is what we did last month. Final budget is what we're going to be voting on a week from now. But it's not going to change. The total numbers aren't going to change.
Change by one dollar, I think.
Well, thank you, David, for fine. I didn't notice that. That's my bad. I did not notice.
I, I, I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure what, what it was. Okay.
Since we're talking about the budget, I kind of make a statement. Okay. We're looking at things the board has budgeted. I mean, I keep hearing talk about the seventeen million dollars we have in our surplus. And the budget has ten million for various reserves that are committed or non, those ten minute million committed. Are for like capital projects, Peasars, health improvement, health insurance reserve. So those fundings are committed roughly ten million dollars worth. That leaves us about. Roughly seven million dollars left this non-committed. That some of it is actually assigned. So we have roughly six point one million unassigned and uncommitted, which is about eight percent of our budget. With the increase we had in, in healthcare this year, which was.
Seven point nine.
Yeah, down here somewhere, eleven point one percent increase.
Which equaled about a million dollars, correct?
One point one five million health increase just for healthcare. So the, the money we raised. By approving a partial increase, wouldn't even pay for the increase in the healthcare cost would be, be a deficit. So. It's prudent just to look ahead and plan for the future that we can't start tapping that. Million, those couple million we have in case we have a problem with the state that's happened in the past. Where the state doesn't pay us in a timely fashion, we're required to have a couple of months worth of surplus. Sitting there in case the state doesn't pay us.
Or if they don't pass their budget, which they've been known to do in December. Years past.
So, yeah, we're looking at. Usually have, that's why we have to have the eight percent save. There was talk about the two million dollars that we budgeted for the grant that we're applying for. It wouldn't be very fiscally, fiscally responsible of us to apply for that grant without having the two million dollars. Available to us. If we took it from our reserve fund, that would take us down below the six million dollars. That they, our auditors recommend we keep. So we had to do something with that. That's why we added that in there. We have to have the money sitting there if we get this grant. So I know we keep talking about tapping into our contingency fund. But that's not a sensible approach to ensure the district is prepared for unexpected challenges. We have to keep that money there in case we have something unexpected happen. We use that money. For increases like we found we're going to have for the insurance. If you look at. The proposed budgets and look at our outlying years. Just staying where we're at with this increase in a twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we're going to be a nine point three million dollar deficit. That we start whittling away that seventeen million dollar surplus. With by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget will be three point eight million or three point two million, three point eight million dollars in the hole. So there was no way to recoup that money. We were only allowed to raise the budget by the consumer index every year, which this year allowed us to. Raise a substantial amount. The nine hundred and seventy-five thousand that we're bringing in would not keep up with the rate of inflation as you saw the even the insurance is wiping that out. So by doing a small increase this year, we're planning for the future. So I'm just gonna. For all of our board members to consider that when they're voting next week for the budget. That we're not only planning for this year, we're planning for future years. Thank you.
Thank you. The other, we might as well talk a little bit about budget. Any other questions about budget?
Just in, thank you, Butch. I appreciate that because obviously you put a lot of hard work in that. And I do hope maybe in the next year, the majority of the board. Will have a good chance to talk about grants. So we can be serious about going after millions like art supplies, music supplies. So if we can keep that on the radar. And if we could have a talk about it, I would love that. And I think it would really help out. So we can finally turn that page. Thank you so much.
One comment I have as well, is a rebuttal to Butch. In regard to our forecast tools that we use, we, we know based on actual past experience in past years. That it does an okay job of forecasting next year, but not a good job of forecasting years two through five. I, 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 all right. Well, I, I downloaded. I downloaded all of those forecasts for the past several years and, and looked at them. And if we went by those forecasts today, the school district would be bankrupt. I mean, if we, if we believe those forecasts.
Which is why we forecast it because if we continue to do the same thing we've always done and we don't make any changes. Then that's what the, the picture's bleak, which is why we have the budget processes in place. And I mentioned this several months ago. This forecast tool does what the forecast tool. We're asking it to do, I think, understanding what the forecast tool includes is most important. And what's important is that you can count on known expenses in out years, which you know. Through collective bargaining agreements is one of the biggest ones because of personnel and their multi-year agreements. So you know what those things are. You can count based on trends of healthcare increases that we may be budgeting eight percent. Increases some years it comes in lower, some years it comes in higher, but you know, year after year. And at the top of the projection tool, there's a bolted list of about seven or eight items there that says assumption. It assumes the increase in revenue with the potential tax increase. That's what we give you different scenarios. So the assumptions are at the top of the page to say, this is what these calculations include. And then you can count on what are your known expenses? You can count on what are your known revenues? If you haven't levied a tax increase, you can't count on money you don't have. You can project if we do a partial tax increase of this, this, or this, or full tax increase or no tax increase. What's the story in the out years? You also cannot count on money you don't have from. The state or the federal government. You can go off of last year's projections or unless they give us. In time before the proposed budget is due to be given to the board. You can count on only what they tell you. This is a safe thing to, to project in your budgets. We could get more money from the state. We might get more money from federal, but the last couple of years, our federal dollars through the title funds has been going down. So you cannot count on money you don't have. That would be foolish. The other thing I would say is that. Yeah. So you can change those pieces that are known pieces. That's why your, your known expenses are there, what you know of. Your reserve fund is there because sometimes things happen that you can't predict. And you have to have that cushion. What I believe this district has done really well with, particularly in the last couple of months, is the investments that we've been making off of the reserve money. We've been able to, we know what we can make because it's a twelve month CD at a fixed rate. So we know what the revenue is from some of that money. We also been making some other adjustments through government sweeps, using our cash balance that is non-risky because we can pull that back at any time. We have the potential to make one point eight million dollars of additional revenue that we weren't expecting. Because we planned well.
Is that in the forecast?
Oh, the only numbers in the forecast are the known numbers, the known revenue.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah. You can't count on the other money you don't have.
That we don't know. That's why.
So, so, so out of one point eight million that we believe we will get, we've only forecasted three hundred thousand dollars.
I think it was like three forty-two, maybe. Yeah. Because we didn't make the other money yet. The other money is a signed note that's guaranteed on a fixed rate. The other stuff is a variable. So. The other stuff is a variable. So again.
Just like the insurance rate going up. Traditionally, the last few years, insurance rates gone up. What, five to seven percent, what we were anticipating this year, when it went to eleven percent?
Yeah, that's sort of.
How do you plan for that? This tool is the best tool available we can use to look at the future. We know by staying, doing what we're doing today. This is what's projected to happen. So we either have to change a few things. One being a revenue coming in, or expenses going out. Or those are the problems we're gonna have. So that, that's what we have to look at. That's what this tool developed to do, using the known numbers.
You can't develop a budget on hope. Hope is not a strategy.
You know, one of the most idiotic things that I've ever seen, I've been on, I think this is my twelfth year on the school board altogether. One of the stupidest things I could never figure out, why the Pennsylvania government requires a school board. To have your budget placed before July first, June thirty first.
Before they tell us.
When they don't have their budget placed after July, and we have to base our budget on what they're gonna give us. I think last year, we got about forty-six or forty-seven million from the state. To our budget. But how do we predict and how do we plan on what they're gonna give us when we don't have their budget number set in stone?
The other thing I'll say, and I said this before, if this board desires to use a different tool. Then you need to tell me what tool it is you'd like to use, because this tool has been very successful. In helping us get to balanced budgets over the last four years, without being able, without having to touch the fund balance to balance the budget. Is once you use that fund balance, that money's gone. You don't have it for out years. And that's when the district's gonna get in, in big trouble financially. You're, you're gonna have a cliff.
You're gonna. The fund balance, using the fund balance, and next you know, we had to have a meeting where we're gonna have massive layoffs.
Those aren't pleasant times. Those are not pleasant times for people. So, you know, if there's, if there's different data that you'd like. Please email me. Let me know what type of data that you think would be more valuable to you. And we will be happy to, to accommodate what your requests are. But again, I, I, I think it would be. Inappropriate and unethical for me to present a budget to you based on money you don't have.
Except it does include. Grant matching funds for grants that are not included in the forecast. So, you know, so that, that, I understand the arguments, but you know, the point is.
Could you repeat that, David? I'm not sure I'm following you.
There's two point one million dollars for grant matching in the forecast. But the fifteen million dollars for the grants is not included in the forecast.
You are correct.
So, so we have an expense included, but we're not counting on.
Correct.
That.
If you recall, the grant that we applied for is for fifteen million dollars. For a seventeen point two million dollar project. The, which, to which thirteen million of that is counted in the ten-year facility plan. If we can get fifteen million dollars from an outside source to cover a thirteen million dollar project and. Include a solar project that's going to save an additional eleven thousand dollars over the remaining eleven years. Why would we not plan effectively for that? In addition to that, the two point two million dollars, if in fact, we do, we, we need to have that money there to. It's our requirement to match, and I had to sign off to say that the board is committed to what you did. You committed to it. So the money's there. If in fact, we do not get the grant. We at least have two point two million dollars to put to the sixty-four million dollars worth of deferred maintenance projects that are on the ten-year plan that you've also approved. So you're no worse for the wear, because you've put extra money aside. If we can get the grant, we're even better off. If we can't get the grant, you at least have a head start on the other multimillion dollars worth of projects.
I think I recall, most of that thirteen million dollars was for the.
The H VAC system at Central Mountain High School was shot.
It was for here.
Beyond its lifetime.
It's beyond life. It's costing us more money and maintenance. It's beyond life. It needs to be done.
One way or the other, we have to start replacing those units.
Or take a bond to, to pay for.
We don't get the grant, then we use the two million dollars to start the replacement.
Or, or another project that's on the books, because there's a whole lot on the books. So again, I, I will stand by the recommendation, because I believe it's fiscally responsible. And, you know, Butch, I agree with you. I think when you are working on closing a budget for a single school year. It's not just a single school year. It's, it's out years as well. And I think asking our, you know, nobody likes a tax increase. But I think that this is a respectful request for everything that is included in the budget to only ask additional support. Of our community of less than one million dollars for an eighty-nine million dollar budget is. Is respectful. And it's based on good planning and it's not based on any single event or any single item that's in that budget. It's a much bigger picture. We work constantly to conserve, reduce, and that's an ongoing process. I, I think it's a respectful budget. I think it's a respectful request.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Going back to number one, and number two, bills for payments and deposit, depositories. Any questions, comments in regard to this too? Items, so four through. Six are tax and budget related. Any questions or comments in regard to four, five, or six? The next several looks like they are. Bids for. Supplies, food service, that sort of thing. Any questions or comments in regard to any of them? Looks like that takes us through. Item sixteen, I believe. Starting with item seventeen, looks like that's the infant development transportation agreements. Questions or comments about that?
That's the one we currently have, right?
Yeah, this is a renewal.
Thank you so much. Yep.
The municipal waste is a renewal, the infant develops a renewal, the copier lease is a renewal and is decreased significantly from the previous year's contract.
Workers' compensation, enterprise rental car fleet agreements.
The workers' compensation was also reduced, right, Johnny?
First compensation did increase by actually seven thousand dollars. However, they're offering us a nineteen percent dividend, which would drop it down to a hundred and eighty-five thousand. What we need to do to be eligible for that dividend is to hold safety meetings, which we do every month. We work well with Eastern Alliance and their crew to do investigations of any kind of workers' comp claims. And just have, there's a mod rate, and if your mod rate is under one, again, that. That puts you in line to actually receive that nineteen percent. We are on a really good course to receive that. So I see. The workers' comp insurance actually being less than last year.
That's not possible. Sorry, that's not possible. That's wonderful news. That's wonderful news. Thank you, the staff, everyone, for doing. Thank you. That doesn't happen.
Other questions about that item? The next is the rental car fleet agreements. Looks like there are twenty-one through. Twenty-nine are the facilities projects that were mentioned earlier.
I do want to say that the three items there were not talked about at facility committee meeting, because it was only last week. When Mr. Pacella came to me and said that these units are failing. We were gonna shut them down for the summer. Because we've already put as much free on as we are permitted to put in them. And so at the point that they're failing that much, I've asked him to have them replaced. So we're asking you for your approval. Based on the amount to replace them, they're basically, they're beyond life. That would come out of capital. All three of them. I think about eighty-eight thousand for all three. Again, unexpected.
Aren't we all?
The next one is a P S U weather station agreement. This was discussed at the facility committee quite a while ago. I want to say almost a year at this point. We've been able to work through the details. What we said is we've got some time to work through details. Mr. Pacella was able to meet with the folks from P S U. And they've identified a location for that weather station, and we'll get some real-time data to use in our curricular areas too. So we're excited to see what that yields, and hopefully at some point, we can bring you a presentation from the students or show you some of the data. The girls' locker room project, the canopy removal, the canopy project, and the insulation project, along with the exterior door replacement. Were all discussed in detail at facilities, as Mr. Johnson indicated. P A, you good?
Brings us to thirty.
Okay, so yeah, the P I E TAP is an evaluation tool for teachers and administrators. And usually that teacher valuation tool is part of the frontline contract, which is the next one down. So based on the, the user friendliness and the, you know, the tool itself. We've done some research. They came in, did some examples. The admin team looked through it at, at length. And they really would like to use the P I E TAP rather than the frontline portion for teacher valuation. So the frontline contract is reduced by that amount, because we're not using that part. It's a package deal for different tools. And the P I E TAP is a separate one. So you'll see two different contracts there. The dot com therapy, this is no additional money to the district. Everybody that has been working in education, particularly early education, knows that speech therapists are at an all-time shortage. And we did contract with this service so that they could help with the shortage that we've been experiencing. And they even came up short. So this just extends the date of their previous contract, because they are servicing our students over the summer. To make up for the lost time that they didn't get in speech services through the school year. The next one with Nitty Learning Services is sort of a contract renewal, but typically. This agreement is an annual for alternative education services. The district's been working with Nitty Learning Services for Alt Ed prior to my time in the district. And they approached us about a multi-year contract. Joni and Mark sat down with the folks there and were able to negotiate a three-year contract. Some additional seats that we've been exceeding, because usually we pre-purchased so many seats, and then you pay by the day. If you exceed that, and we have been exceeding the previous rate of prepaid seats. So by adding more prepaid seats at a reduced rate, they also included an eleventh seat for free. And then locked in that rate for the following three years. So we believe this is a sound financial decision. Again, to get some known expenses and to hold, hold that rate.
That's my question. I was gonna ask, how many seats do we normally fill?
We usually, we used to purchase eight from them, and we did not pre-purchase from Justice Works. Their contract's not on here yet. I don't think we received that. We usually, the reason we like two locations is because sometimes students get in altercations with each other. And the consequences involve alternative education for both students, and it's not really wise to send them to the same location. So sometimes it's best to have two options for any of those individual or unique circumstances. So we have, and Christina or Nick, maybe you can help me out here, we're, we're exceeding ten seats. Sixteen current seats across the two places. So we had previously prepaid eight, so now we'd like to prepay ten. With an additional one, so that it's a guaranteed eleven.
That's why I was wondering if the eleven's gonna be enough. If we do the eleven here, we're gonna have enough with the other.
I was thinking the same thing, Butch.
Yeah, we, we can look at some prepaid seats with the other site as well. I, I think I'd like to have, be able to use both locations.
If we, thank you, Butch, you were exact same thing. But the thing, my question is for the prepaid, let's say twenty. But if we don't use twenty, are we still charged for twenty?
That's what the prepaid is.
So that's.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're purchasing upfront. If you need more, you can get more seats if they have room.
Right.
But you pay by a daily rate. And so a lot of times, you're not exceeding your seats until the very end of the school year. But alternative ed placements aren't permanent placements. They rotate. So students are really expected to be there a minimum of forty-five days. Many students come back after forty-five days. Some students need to stay for ninety days. Or, you know, so the seats are also, it's not like once you use one for forty-five, it's refillable. With the prepaid. So we don't always have, sixteen is high. We don't always have sixteen students in that placement at one time.
As, as what we have, what we've been using been adequate, I guess, is. I mean, I know that that's one of the things. That. We need as an option.
Wow.
For.
If, I will speak. Frankly, we need an alternative education program in Clinton County. I've asked the board several years ago to consider an alternative ed classroom onsite. It would have its own entrance. It would not have access to other students. At the time that I asked for that, it was not supported. Although the site has been approved by the Department of Education. The amount of money that we spend in transportation to transport kids out of the county for services is. Extremely unfortunate. So if we could relook at having a, a location. Either onsite where we are leasing the space to a for-profit agency, which we do already in different cases. Those are other ways to get some of the money back that we're paying out and to eliminate. You wouldn't eliminate completely sending students away, because you still want to use multiple locations. But I think it would be extremely prudent for the district to reconsider looking at alternative education. More locally. If I'm a parent and my child makes a mistake and they need to tend an alternative education placement, I'm gonna be much more comfortable. If they're closer to home than traveling. Also, we're saying that some of the students who are having trouble behaving, now we're putting them on bus for an additional thirty miles a day. So again, I, I brought that up a couple of years ago. It was not supported, but I would.
I would one hundred support that. One hundred percent supportive. Keep it here in our community. Much more accessible, use local. And. Stop all these transportation expenses.
We, we did have that. And where you're going, Butch.
Probably about.
Probably twenty years.
Eight years ago. Ten years ago, we had, up to then, we had, it's called the Heart Academy. It was, it was an alternative education placement facility we use at Flemington. And we went by the wayside because of budget constraints mostly.
Well, I will say that since that time, though, the rules and laws around alternative education programs has changed. Even as recently as what, two years ago, Christina. So things are, are, are different. So we couldn't just replicate that program. But I think that it is worth exploring some, some alternative opportunities for, for the district.
What I was getting at, bringing that up, we've heard people through the community. Mentioned that they're looking for something, and I've heard them say, like the Heart Academy. I saw that different posts on social media. And I've had different people remind me about, we had that. So it might not be a bad time to start looking at something like that again. It sounds to me like you're starting to get more support for that internally, to have our own alternative placement.
What I'd like to see, I think, is what you're saying is, what I hear you saying is the fact that. We're spending a lot of dollars to transport these students to other outside sites. What I would like to see is if we were to start our own program. But still keep a few extra seats out there for whatever reason or whatever need. Look at the comparison on what we're paying to send these kids and transport them. How would that, what we're playing, paying in that regard, how would that stack up to running our own program cost-wise? It seems to me that it would be much more cost-efficient to run our own program with what we would save. Now, I don't know that for sure without seeing dollar figures.
And what I, what I don't know, Jeff, I don't know that we're allowed to run our own program. Unless we're hiring. So it would have to look at it. We could look at a couple of different options based on what's permitted. But that is something that we could look at a couple of different proposals and then bring forward some data to the. To the board about what those different proposals look like, what would be the, the resources needed, what would be the resources saved, and, you know, maybe weigh that out. And, you know, maybe weigh that out.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't mean run our own program. I mean, have an in-house program operated by an outside company or whatever.
I'd be satisfied with an in-county program.
I would be happier if it's not on campus, not on campus.
When we had it before, I think the county had given our probation officer to sign there. And they had some counseling people sign there also.
So I think there's some, a lot of misunderstanding, I will say, around alternative education. Not all students who are in alternative education are violent criminals. They are, alternative education is used for a lot of different infractions that are high level infractions. And I've seen in-house programs be extremely successful for students. The consequences serves its purpose. And that's why you also need a couple of different choices. Because not all students, in some cases, using the outside placement is a better choice, depending on the unique circumstances. But, and we could even determine what levels go here and what levels go there and so forth. But students make mistakes. Their brains aren't fully formed. Their executive functioning skills aren't fully formed. And they don't always have the same support at home that they should. And kids make mistakes. And so trying to give them an alternative option with some restorative practices in a place that tells them that we still care about them, even though they make mistakes, I think is most appropriate for developing students.
Well, I think that you're right. They do make mistakes. And I think they do need to have a different environment, whether it's forty-five days or whatever. And I think that that would certainly give our building administrators some flexibility on, when they have to deal with kids that are having issues that they don't necessarily, they need to be removed from the, from the school for whatever reason. And I think we need, I think it would, would be, you know, one of our responsibilities to help with that so that we can, can give those options.
So what I hear is I feel like there's enough support from the board tonight to start exploring some possible options. And then when we have all that data, make a recommendation, bring forward to the board a couple of proposals or some options to consider.
Sounds good.
I definitely always love options. I definitely though, want the community's input. And I understand you have to come up with something first before the community can comment on it. But I will say this, I had a counselor tell me this, just not even six months ago. He was very, very happy with safety and security, what the school district is doing, the changes. But he said, and I didn't even ask, he brought this up. He said, the best thing for a student in certain circumstances is that the program is not on the school property, getting them in a totally different environment. And he's seen the change, what happens with a student. So we just have to balance all of that when you're.
Well, we said that, we just said that. We, you need, not just, and in house, you need options for.
I'm just saying, this came from a professional working in the district. And that was his comment that how important it is that there's off-site areas because the child reacts differently and better. So, and also don't want to see any.
Situation individually.
Okay, but I also feel very strongly, if something should happen this year, next year, or three years from now, the CTC program, square footage only gets bigger and it doesn't shrink. So keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I stick my two cents in here?
Go ahead, Wayne.
Talking about dealing with incorrigible students in alternative education. About five or six years ago, I tried to persuade the board to the idea of establishing a pre-kindergarten program. Right now, we get kids when they're five years old in kindergarten. And lots of times, because of their home environment, their minds have already been pretty well set. That school is not a pleasant place for them. We should get them at a younger age in a pre-kindergarten program where we can get maybe four-year-olds and three-year-olds to where their minds are not quite as set yet that we can mold them into the idea that school is a pleasant place to be, that school is something for them to look forward to. And I think we would call, we would then cut down on a lot of this incorrigible behavior and behavior of those students who are not able to function in a full school atmosphere would put less stress on the need for an alternative program. So I would, once again, I raise that issue. Let's think about the possibility of establishing a pre-kindergarten program where we can catch them before they become incorrigible.
Definitely some other benefits to pre-K as well, but thank you, Mr. Coe.
Other questions before, I think we're, moves us on to item thirty-six, I think.
So we say thirty-four was a renewal, thirty-five was a renewal. Pediatric Developmental Services, this is a different speech therapy contract that we're trying. Again, we're just struggling so much. IU ten has been struggling to provide services as well. So this is just another route we're trying to serve the students who need the speech therapy. You see the IU ten's service agreement, this is higher than last year because there's some additional services in here with regards to needs based on hearing. Although we do believe that the services through the IU would just absolutely meet the needs of the student and be less expensive than a residential placement for the degree and need that there is.
Thank you.
The next two are donations to the CTC program. One is a cash donation and one is in the form of a vehicle. Up there is Justice Works Summer School Program. We have some students who are utilizing that, that have a higher degree in need and then takes us to policy.
Okay, I think we can deal with the policies as a group and discuss the questions.
I have a question on one of.
Okay, go ahead.
So, ready?
Yep, yeah, thanks.
Number one, policy thirty-two, three-two-six dash one.
Butch, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Wayne. If three-two-six dot one whistleblower policy. I just have a question about it, kind of reading through it. And it, bring it up here. It's under the guidelines. It says, "All current and future district employees will provide the district a written acknowledgement as prepared and provided to the employee by the district, indicating that they have read, understand, and agreed to obey. And otherwise, I think it could be be bound by this policy." What happens if a district employee refuses to sign?
Yeah.
So they're only acknowledging that they're aware of the policy. Mark, do you want to talk about how that occurs annually? It already occurs. But this would be, this one is a new policy. This is not a renewal.
I just want to make sure we're not going to run into any issues with the union.
But generally speaking, what, what happens on all of these policies that require staff notification as we upload them into our vector solutions platform to where the employees can go in, they have electronic access to the policy, and they basically check a box to say that they've reviewed the policy. You know, quite honestly, I actually never have had a employee refuse to sign off on it. I mean, I would say that the, the next paragraph of the policy basically says if they violate any term of the policy, they could be subject to disciplinary action. So if they would flat out refuse, I guess they would be opening themselves up to potential disciplinary action. But I've never had.
If they violate the policy, which first whistleblower, so they want to tell on somebody for doing something wrong, but they didn't sign this form. It's, I'm just confused with that. As long as they're signing all the other policies, we're good.
Okay, yeah, we have them sign off on all of those. So we keep record then every year too.
Questions on that one or others?
Yeah, I have a question about, it's just a general question about it. What, what is the need for this policy to begin with? Since it's already addressed in several other policies that we already have on the books and that there's a whistleblower law already on the books. What is, what is the purpose? What is the, the need for this policy? I guess it's my, is my question.
I think that after the solicitor reviewed it and we discussed it, it just seemed another tool for the school district. That's all for the staff. And whether or not anyone uses it, that's their choice. It's just another tool, just like anything else.
It just seems redundant to me. I mean, I don't see that we.
Well, if no one uses it, that's wonderful, right?
Well, then why have it there?
Well.
If nobody uses it.
Well, it doesn't cost us any more money just to pass it next week. So I'm pretty proud of all the work that's gone into it and the comments, and especially Mark Condo, all the research he did. Um, it's, I wouldn't be surprised if other school districts pick up on it and use it. In fact, PSBA, I can't wait. And I'm sure they'll be excited to see it too. So thank you, Mark, and everybody.
As the chairman of the policy committee, all I could say is the policy committee discussed this and created this policy really because there was a demand coming. We felt the pressure of the demand for it.
Where was the demand coming from?
From, well, I don't know about the public in general, but I know Mrs. Lynch was very instrumental and, and very interested in this whistleblowing thing. I can't think of any other board member that.
I didn't have any need for it.
My, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, my understanding and recollection of the conversations surrounding this policy was that it might help to alleviate any confusion on the part of employees, members of the public, other stakeholders in terms of where they can go or what might, what they might be able to do to address grievances or certain concerns within the district, regardless of the topic. Because I also believe that part of the administrative regulations that will go along with this will involve a district website that will sort of encapsulate all these different policies. It's sort of the one-stop shop, so to speak, for folks to go to access information that may have concerns, complaints that they would like to direct toward the district. And those of us who are policy wonks who might, we, we handle and we deal with policies on a daily basis. But for many members of the public, it might be confusing or difficult to find those items on the school district website. So at least my understanding and recollection of the conversations amongst board members and policy committee members was this might be able to help alleviate some of those confusing concerns that the, that the public may have. And I don't know if Mr. Lindsay has anything to add to that, but.
Confirmation, simplification.
But I still don't know where the demand for the policy came from.
Okay, that's fine.
Me, where?
No, I.
For sure, Mr. Dietrich, you were pretty.
You were pretty adamant.
Instrumental in this and adamant that we have this.
I initiated the process, yes.
Why did you initiate the process? I mean, was there, was there a need for this? I mean, I'm just asking, I'm just asking questions.
I, I, I'd like to continue to the other policies. We're not really, we're just going around and around.
Again, I'm not getting any answers, so, which is typical.
I think.
I'm sorry.
That this policy, even though it's redundant and encompasses a lot of other policies, if it's there and someone uses it, fine. If it's there and no one uses it, fine. I think it's not going to cost us anything. Let's just, I think, move on.
Thank you.
I was just concerned about the, normally when you initiate something that impacts the association, we have to negotiate it. So I was concerned that we didn't have a problem with the association and having, making their people sign something. So long as they're good, I'm good.
Questions on other policies on the list?
No, they did a great job. Thank you.
The rest of them are part of this cyclical review of the nine hundreds.
All right, moving along to personnel.
I have a question on the transportation supervisor. I really wasn't aware what was going on with that. If someone could explain it to me, please.
So we've been actively seeking, we, a position of transportation supervisor to fill a vacancy. The person, the employee who's currently in that role has applied for another position within the district and was awarded that position. But we haven't made the transition yet because we haven't been able to backfill the transportation supervisor position. The main issue with the position is that it has evolved over the years. And it also seems to be, we've had applicants. We've offered the position to at least four different individuals over the last three or four months. And everyone has turned us down because of the fee, or I'm sorry, the salary, which is part of the Act ninety-three agreement. And so with the discussion with the Personnel Committee, looking at, do we want to revise the, the job description to reflect accurately the, the changes in the role? One of the main changes in the role is that it used to be someone who was coordinating things and now it's really a supervisory role. And that, that's a different level of work. Part of the reason that has happened with our transportation partner, Saskow Hannah, the folks in their end that used to be able to help with the coordination and the supervision of drivers is actually driving because there is such a shortage of drivers that more of the workload has fallen onto our staff. And Joni knows is overseeing and supervising transportation, the amount of work. She's done some investigation into that. We've included our employees and worked closely with Saskow Hannah. And they've come up with this draft. Mark, I think you were instrumental in this as well to reflect the actual role in an updated way. And then there's some discussion then too, like, once we get the job description approved as recommended, then that would lead into what type of salary may or may not be appropriate as per the Act ninety-three agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Butch. Thank you. Do you see this as, this person has one job, like, and then over the summer, there's, they don't have work? Or does this person have double?
The summer is very busy. The routes, so as soon as, even before school's out, the routes are starting. Because of course, you have graduating class and you have an incoming class. Those registrations are coming in, most of them in the spring, but they come in all summer long. So then the new routes are being developed and then need to be distributed and communicated to families by the early August. Once those notifications goes out, go out, then any type of corrections or changes or childcare issues are being addressed. And so, yeah, it's actually very, very busy. There's also reports, all kinds of stuff, so.
Dr. Martin, I just would like to add there too, that we also have our extended school year program.
Yeah.
In the summer months, we have our Keystone Camp that also has some transportation involved with that. So there's, there's plenty to do year-round involving transportation, so.
So it almost sounds like it's not, but it sounds like an athletic director. It's like they have, there's something every month. It's not just, okay.
It's definitely a year-round position. It's always been, and the secretarial support, there's a secretary for that position also that's year-round.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. That makes sense. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Other questions regarding personnel? Okay.
Next one is the K-12 Health and PE curriculum. I think Rick spoke to this a couple of months ago after the Curricular Co-Curricular Committee meeting. And based on policy, this will require two-thirds vote. So it will need to be pulled separately next week and for a roll call. And then along with the special ed curriculum pieces that Rick spoke about. And then along with the special ed curriculum pieces that Rick spoke about tonight, which would be the next three items. And then we're down to three program approvals. Homeland Security, Teacher Education, and Entrepreneurship. The first two program, I know the board's aware of these also, the first two for sure. The, and those two also were included, just kind of related to the budget. When you add new programs, you need to add staff. So there are some staffing positions in there to staff these two programs. The CTC Entrepreneurship Business Program is really a curriculum realignment or rewriting. We have had a business program that has not been under the CTC field. And through this entrepreneurship SIP code, we can, we've redesigned our current courses into, to match the SIP code. And therefore we can use the existing staff. And any student who's taking these courses would now be eligible, the district would be eligible for a thousand dollar per student rebate from the state with this revision. But no additional staffing for that one. What we are waiting for, and Kurt knows this, he's been instrumental in putting everything in for state approval. The deadline for submitting for new programs for next year was May 31st. So they have not yet given us back the approval. We anticipate through Kurt's conversations with folks at, at the Career and Tech Bureau, that we will be getting them. It's just we were asking you to approve them because we'd like to start advertising for those anticipated positions. But again, we wouldn't hire them until we know that the program's approved. So your approval also requires state approval. I mean. There's an articulation agreement there for the CTC program, Early Childhood Program and Commonwealth University. That gives them advanced credits, right Kurt? Six advanced credits, if they're in our program, they earn six credits from Commonwealth University. And that's on to athletics and personnel.
Any questions, comments regarding to athletics and personnel? Right, I think that's it. Does anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make the motion.
Roger's not here to do that.
Yes, I realize.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Super terrific. Thank you all.
8:02 PM, the meeting is adjourned.